Mute this. How do I, how do I expand to die?
I don't know. I have to sit down. Okay. I think, call me if you need anything, Kev. Call me if you need anything.
Good evening and welcome to the February 27th Planning Board Meeting. This meeting will be broadcast live and recorded by Foxborough Cable Access. There will be a few people joining in by Zoom tonight that we know of. All that being said. Madam Planner, do your thing.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I'll do my planner's report and then I will pass it off to Gabby because we've been getting a flurry of new activities recently, so she'll, she'll run through a couple of projects you're gonna start seeing. We are still awaiting any word from the Attorney General's Office or EOHLC regarding both the accessory dwelling unit by law and the MBTA Communities by law. So we're still in a holding pattern there. I did pass along a couple of weeks back that EOHLC let us know that our, our district's application was complete, but they haven't yet given us the, the confirmation and the blessing that you've done it correctly, so.
Do you consider that a, is it a concern that has taken so long or is this normal?
No, this is the, that this deadline was the deadline with the most affected communities, so they have a lot of different plans to comb through to make sure that everything is working out.
Okay.
So I'm not worried about it. I think it's just backlog. I am a little concerned that maybe potentially there could be some changes in the guidelines before we get our blessing, in which case we may have to go back to town meeting, but I'll worry about that when it happens.
Is it your understanding or have you heard anything that things are kind of being put on the back burner a little bit while this unfunded Band-Aid issue is being explored?
I have heard that the AG's office might be issuing some language shortly regarding how it affects their determinations. I haven't heard anything definitive though, and I don't know what, what they're gonna do with this. I, I do understand that a number of communities are going to be filing suit. I just, I, everything's up in the air right now.
Right.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm. So we'll skip over the master plan for now. We'll have a discussion a little bit later on. We did submit an application for the bike path. We also submitted the, the recurring applications to the Massachusetts Gaming Commission for the tourism funds that we share with, rent them and Plainville. So we have another round of that in. The other, I, I didn't list it, but we, there is one other grant application that I'm, I'm hoping to submit, and that will be to the Mass Downtown Initiative for funding to, for like basically Landscape Architect Services to look at the central parking area in the common. Just ways to beautify that, focusing on, on lighting for, you know, feelings of safety as well as screening some of the, the less desirable uses like dumpsters and whatnot. So hopefully we'll be successful with that, but I'm gonna throw it in shortly because the, the application period's open now. Flood plane bylaw update, we did get approval through DCR that our language meets their specifications. And I talked to AdCom about it yesterday. They, they were not very concerned about it because most of the changes that we're making were dictated by DCR and based off of FEMA issuing new flood plane maps. The whole purpose of this is to make sure that we remain in compliance so that people who rely on the National Flood Insurance Program can continue to have their property insured. So no big changes, just little tweaks. Economic development, the biggest thing on my plate right now is the Schneider Electric land on Ponsett Avenue. This is 55 acres and they're targeting a sale sometime this summer. We'll be discussing this as part of the master plan process. But right now that land is all zoned industrial. The Schneider Electric has the ability to grandfather that in. Some residents have expressed concerns to me about, you know, noise, air quality, et cetera, if another industrial use goes in there. But at the same time, you know, I, I did bring it up during the MBTA Communities discussions and there was some pushback about considering housing even for the historic site. So this is gonna be a balancing act where we really go out to the community and see like what, what do you want to, to happen here? What is your vision? And of course Schneider Electric intends to make money, so it's not just, you know, they're not gonna, you know, sit on it and let it just be nothing in perpetuity. They're hoping to get some of that money back from remediating and demolishing. So, you know, we're just juggling the needs and desires of multiple stakeholders and seeing what, if anything, we need to do. And, you know, if there's any zoning changes, we'll probably bring them before the town meeting in fall.
You would anticipate that that would be sold with a plan approved, would you?
Chances are. Grandfathered in, though.
If it's industrial use, then they can do it by right and, you know, they, they can just go ahead with the sale. But if there's any kind of zoning change that needs to take place, chances are there will be a purchase and sale agreement that specifies that the sale won't close until that zoning change is, is received. And if it's not, then the deal dissolves and it goes back to Schneider. That's usually how things work with variances in my experience. So we'll see, we'll see what happens. I mean, Schneider's indicated to me that they're gonna start talking to people in the summer. That doesn't mean that a sale's going to be even penciled in at that point. So, you know, we have some time. It's just we, they asked us what the town wants to see and what the town wants to see very much depends on what the residents want to see. So we didn't really have anything firm to tell them. So we're gonna try to use the master plan to get at least some feedback from residents before Schneider starts talking to prospective buyers.
Would you expect that either you as professional staff or us as board members or other town officials would be dealing with prospective buyers to develop a plan prior to a final sale?
I, I believe that that's likely. I mean, 55 acres is too much for any one use. My guess is this is gonna be something mixed use. Either whether it's entirely industrial commercial of some sort or there's a residential component or there are two different development firms going in on it and do, each doing their own thing. My guess is this is just too much land to not have to negotiate with the town. But it all remains to be seen right now.
And one last question, Gab.
Can you get closer to the mic?
Aside from Kevin, is there anyone still, were you involved in State Hospital?
I was, I, I arrived at the very tail end of the zoning part. You know, the development, I was here the whole, you know, for the whole process, but not the zoning.
Preliminary stuff.
Yeah.
Because I, I think there's probably gonna be some parallels there in, at this stage of the game.
It's actually been brought up to us that, that, that that would, might be a good model to follow by one of our residents. But again, that's one voice right now. We haven't really gotten the pulse of the community yet.
Okay. Thank you.
Scram has opened. Scott and I have both tried them out and both of us give them a resounding two thumbs up. So if you, you're in the area for breakfast or lunch, I think they're open till 4:00 PM actually. So if you even want like an afternoon coffee, it's an excellent source for that. So I just wanna, wanted to plug them. Opportunities, the, the 131 Moore Street project, we were in the queue to get targeted brownfield assessment funding through the EPA. As of now, it's not, no longer available. We've been told that potentially it could come back like late May-ish. But we're basically back at square one, like we were told that we would be highly competitive if and when it's brought back. So I would say don't rely on any, any funding for that project at this point, which means it's just gonna probably continue to sit there in ownership limbo. State Hospital Auditorium is in legislative limbo still. So I have not heard anything yet from the legislature indicating that that property will be released for, for other purposes than entertainment. And I already mentioned the MBTI application, so I think that we're ready to discuss the projects that are coming our way.
So after a few weeks of really not much activity, we received four applications in the last two days.
Wow.
So, so we're gonna be very busy. We received two applications from the Kraft Group. One of them is the expansion of the delayed exit lot on, you know, P-10. They've acquired some, some more land and they're, so they're expanding that lot. They have to move some of the, move the drainage part, so, you know, it's, we're gonna have our consultants review that. The other one is actually a very interesting proposal. They are, they have a tenant that's interested in taking over the Christmas tree shop location for indoor pickleball. And also they're proposing, and this is why they're coming to us, to use the area where the winter skate is for outdoor pickleball courts in the better weather. So there will be a year-round use for, for that location. So they'll have to do some improvements, but they need to do a modification of the site plan.
Would you anticipate that the P-10 proposal would qualify as a minor modification? Will they be coming in for that?
No, they did not come as a minor modification. It's a site plan.
Is it?
Yes. So, and then the other two applications we received, one was for Maple Crest subdivision, the six lot subdivision that we approved as a preliminary subdivision on North Street. And so they filed for the definitive approval. And the other one is for East Belcher Road. The Cook property that the ZBA has been dealing with, they have filed a special permit for Contractor Yard. So those two, the, the subdivision and this Contractor Yard would be on the 27th of March. The Kraft Group, the first hearing, at least for the, for the parking lot, would be on the 13th. And we also received notification that the lawsuit, 73 Main Street, has been settled. So they're coming back with their final presentation, the Briarwood condos.
Okay.
So, so they'll be, they'll be here at the next meeting.
There's a lawsuit?
Yes.
Yes, with, with an a butter. An a butter, yeah.
Okay.
That's it.
That's a mouthful.
It's been a busy week. It's been a very busy week.
We have a lot of paper. A lot of paper.
Can I ask a question regarding the Main Street project? I mean, where do we stand with the sewer there?
Do you turn him up?
Where do you stand on the sewer line for 73 Main Street?
I, I'm not, I'm not aware. I don't have that information. I'm sorry.
Okay, I was just curious.
Okay, any other questions or are you all ready for the master plan conversation?
I think we're ready.
I think we're ready.
Very excited.
Yep.
So as you're fully aware, we, we've been engaged in this process for a couple of months now with our consultants Weston and Sampson. Sue Mara's here tonight from Weston and Sampson just to give an overview of the master plan. Some of what she's gonna say is, is basic background information about master plans and that's more for the, the folks that are, that may be tuning in at home. But then, you know, there will be a guided discussion around some of the major plan components. Sue, would you like to sit at this table?
Sure. Thank you.
And just remember to click towards the back.
Yes. Okay.
Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you very much. As Catherine said, we're gonna, we will start a little bit, you know, big picture about what a master plan is, which I know everyone here knows what it is, but it's, you know, it's good practice to kind of think about it. And like she was saying, that if there's folks at home, it might help them get oriented to the process. So what is a master plan? This sort of talks a little bit about the different things that you can expect from it. The, the way I like to envision it, right, is that it gives you an idea of what your baseline is, right? Where you are right now. And if you don't change anything, you can understand, you could start here and then you end up here. But what the master plan does is allow you to think about what your vision is. So like maybe you don't want to be, you know, in 20 years here, maybe you want to be here. What are the lever points? Like what are the things you need to do to change? Is it policies? Is it, you know, grant funds for certain infrastructure projects? That make that difference between just, you know, continuing to go along as you are, which maybe is what exactly what the town wants. But, you know, if it is something that's different from, you know, what, where you're projected to grow, the master plan can help to identify those things. So. I like my inverted triangle because it shows, it shows how the, the process is also supposed to work in terms of, you know, the vision being the overall, you know, idea of where you want your community to go. And then the goals, you know, there's different chapters of the comp plan for land use and transportation and natural resources. And each of them will have goals that will support that vision. And then the policies and actions are the same thing, like each goal, there'll be some policies that are supporting that and then there'll be some specific actions that, that support that too. And this, you know, maybe should be inverted the other way because there are many more actions than there are vision. But the, the vision is the big important thing that has to be done initially. Sue.
I like your inverted triangle.
I feel like, I know. I, we were, have been actually thinking a lot about like different ways to illustrate those things, like how the, you know, we're like a tree, kind of the branch. But anyway, we went with the inverted triangle. So what we, what we are doing tonight with the planning board, because this is, this is one of the kind of important things, is to, you know, look at, you did a master plan in 2015 and it was a really great master plan. And we want to test whether the, the vision and the goals from that plan are still what the town wants. So this first slide is written in the plan. And it's not, it's not very long, so if you want to take a second to read through it. And you don't have to decide immediately. You can think about, think on it a little bit. But we wanted to test this out and say, is this, is this still the plan? Does it need to be updated at all? I think that, and we can talk a little bit about this as we're going through. You know, you have sort of decided about your, your, your growth nodes are sort of a defining factor from the 2015 plan that I think are going to continue on to this plan. And I think that being a little more intentional about, you know, the reason those growth nodes are a good tool for, and a good strategy for the town is that they direct growth, but they also protect the rest of the town. So I might work with Catherine a little bit to see if we can work with the vision statement, not change it, but be a little, be a little more clear, you know, about, about how the growth nodes are important to the overall strategy for, for getting to that vision. Okay. So these were the, let's see, four, four growth nodes that you had, right? This, again, you've seen these so many times, right? So I'm not showing you anything you don't, you don't know. But, you know, we're testing out, right? You know, I know that things have happened since 2015. And in talking to Catherine and in talking to the Economic Development Committee, there's been a lot of success doing the things that the plan set out to do. And I think that that's really important to, to document because you, you want to say like, we said we were going to do this, we used these tools and it worked. That's really important information. So I think we're gonna go through these one by one and I'm gonna use the information from the old plan just to understand, you know, because I think already from what we're finding out from doing our existing additions work is that a lot of things have changed. I don't know that you want to remove any of these, but maybe you want to tweak the specific strategy for some of them. We'll see. Okay, so the Uptown growth node. This one, from talking to Catherine and from going to the Economic Development Committee, we know that the property from Schneider Electric, and that's that, that's that, it's not labeled, but that's the, the graphic that's on the, your left. That those, those parcels are the parcels in town that are owned by that company. So I didn't realize it too, this is from the old plan, that it looks like they do own some property that's not, doesn't butt the, the parcel that's near your Uptown.
Yes, they, they have property on Kokacit Ave, which they are maintaining. That they're, they're still going to be a Foxborough-based business and they're gonna continue operations. But they are going to sell legacy property that they no longer have use for. But they are going to sell legacy property that they no longer have use for.
So we know that that, that will be an update too, that we'll include in your, I'm sorry, in your master plan, and that will be an important part, I think, of this growth node is considering how that fits in with the rest of the Uptown. And I know I did hear from Catherine tonight, and I think previously too, looking at that, is it the state hospital? Is it an overlay zone? To see if that might be an appropriate proposal to make in the master plan as far as the type of development that the town would like to see there. So I don't know if there are any other, you know, looking at this, looking at this plan, are there any other things that we should be removing, revising, adding? There, in the, in the 2015 plan, it did talk a lot about the, you know, the trolley and the multimodal access, and it sounds like maybe that's something that is not going to move forward in this plan?
Yeah.
One would think.
Okay. So again, we don't, I mean, I can, Catherine can send you this presentation, so if you want to take a closer look to see if there's like specifically anything here that, we don't need to include that anymore because we completed that, or we are no longer looking into that, so we can kind of take it off. Because, I mean, I think, you know, there seems like a really sound growth management strategy that the town has embraced and would like to continue, so we just want to make sure it's still seeing the things it needs to say. So the same question here for this, like the stadium growth node. We will take off those references to the multimodal trolley for this, for this plan, because it sounds like that's not something, you know, we're continuing with. But are there any other updates, any additional development that has happened since then? Any, you know, recommendations that we want to remove?
Well, I think that area is applicable also to Uptown, which you were just talking about, you know, but in particular here, it's still a very dynamic and fluid area for us. You were just talking about that. And so I wouldn't, I wouldn't think that that would be something you would want to write out of the strategic plan at this time.
The, the growth node you're talking about?
Yes.
Yes, absolutely. I think the one thing that it sounds like we might take off is that, is the references to the trolley.
Yes.
Yeah. But other than that, we will, we'll keep everything else unless we're hearing from either the, you know, the town or the board that, that we should.
What do you guys feel about the boundaries for this specific growth node? Should it be constrained to what was in 2015? Should it be expanded a little bit, shifted in any way?
Well, is that, is that effectively the overlay district?
No, it's not even as big as the overlay district. S1 goes north of Route 1, right?
Are you referring to S1?
I'm just, I'm just looking at that visual is what I'm looking at. That's.
The pink blob is the node, and that's pretty limited. It doesn't even include the southern portion of Patriot Place where Hobby Lobby is.
That is pretty small.
Then what's the dotted line?
That was the trolley.
No, no, the dotted line around.
Up top looks like the boundary to the town. Because there's.
Oh, is that the town line?
Yep.
That node's small.
That's kind, that was my thought, but I'd like to get your thoughts on like, what, what would be a logical boundary for this node?
I mean, I would think, I would think North Street on one side anyway, wouldn't you?
North Street?
All the way to it. Because, I mean, you've got.
On the, oh, on the stadium side?
Yeah, you've got the terminals there, and that, you know, is, could be in play at any time.
Yeah, that's very true. For your reference, Sue, the terminals building is an underutilized property. The Kraft Group owns it. They were using it for like film production.
Oh, did that stop?
But it's been underutilized since the pandemic.
I think it is.
So they are looking into other uses.
You want to expand it to grab that?
I'm saying that.
Yeah, yeah. I think that's an excellent leeway point. Why isn't, why doesn't the growth node go on the other side of Route 1? Or that side of Route 1?
Where's the parking lot, sorry.
To the east side, do you mean?
Yes, no.
To the north?
Across the street.
Yeah, Route 1 is, is, it goes like diagonally upwards. So on the other side is, is where it says reserve area north of Route 1 for campus-style development.
Like, why isn't that part of the node?
It could be.
And just maybe staff can pitch in here, but I'm thinking that any area in, anything, any property in this area that would be likely to be in play for development, I would think we would want to include, wouldn't we? Or am I wrong about that?
I would agree. I mean, all that area right now is surface lots. Is it going to continue to be surface lots in the next 10 years? Probably. How about 20 years? It makes sense to start looking at it.
How often do we do a master plan? I guess every 10?
This one's been 10 years.
Is that normal?
Uh, for a lot of communities around here, yeah.
It has a like 20-year planning horizon, so it's, it's intended to look forward like 20, at least 20 years, and doing it every 10 years. You mentioned an overlay zone? I mean, I don't know if it makes sense to see if, do those boundaries maybe should match?
Yeah, there is a Economic Development Overlay District.
Okay.
And it goes all the way to Bass Pro Shop on the south, southern side.
And it does go north of Route 1?
Yes, it does go north of Route 1, and then to the, but the, the limit is, the boundary is the, the train tracks on the north side.
Does it make sense to just expand the growth node to match that?
Well, I think also the terminals building.
Well, I think we're talking about a little bit beyond that.
Oh, beyond that, okay. Okay, okay.
At least that's what I was thinking.
And I mean, the whole corridor of Route 1 is its own animal, and it's not particularly long here in Foxborough. It's surprising how abruptly it ends within the town limits. So I don't even know, like, you know, from my, my perspective, like, it's, it wouldn't be a node so much as like a target corridor type of thing, but if you're looking at nodes, then, then I would say that what, what the board is indicating would be a pretty good boundary.
Okay. Okay. That's helpful, thank you.
Honestly, I'm not sure exactly that that pink area does a heck of a lot for us.
Pretty limited.
It is surprising.
We're looking over the next 10-year horizon.
Chestnut Green, we've heard that there's been quite a bit of development here, quite a bit of successful revitalization, so, you know, that's something to note, you know, sort of take credit for, right? You know?
Poor trolley, just keeps them dying.
Kept it, yeah, I know. We'll take that off.
Was that a page thing?
No.
No.
Yeah, it's before.
So, so just for clarification, so you have invencis in the Chestnut Green node?
No, that's just pointing out the node is just the orange, right?
Investis in the Uptown mode. Node, sorry.
So it might be, let me, I gotta go back to the Uptown one. These are from the 2015 plan, so these are not our plans. These are, you had.
Existing.
Let's see, it is just called out. So.
I don't think we want it in a node.
Okay.
Well, I, I'm just one person.
I'm not sure.
It certainly is an area that I, that we need to focus on, certainly in the near term, because with the pending sale and everything.
When do we say growth node? It's not just commercial, correct?
It's not just commercial necessarily.
Okay, okay. Then maybe, yeah.
Yeah, I think we, it'd be smart to do it and.
Yeah.
Which one do you think it would be closest, like, which, if you were to classify it in one or the other, would you choose Chestnut? Would you choose Uptown, or would you kind of leave it its own thing?
I think you leave it its own thing.
Okay.
So different, a new growth node, kind of?
Yeah.
Well, it is heavy industrially and middle of residential, so we do kind of want to keep it separate.
That does, that does make sense to kind of let you, you know, be a little more specific.
Sure.
Okay.
Okay, somebody orient me.
Wow, the Bristol campus. Haven't seen that in a while.
Oh. What's there now? What's in the big orange now?
The Bristol campus?
No. The oval.
The growth area.
This is growth area.
Yeah, what's there?
Not much.
Forest Crossing, isn't it?
Yeah. Yes.
Okay, okay, I just need to get, I have trouble getting oriented.
So where would be the senior housing on that?
Walnut.
Yeah. It would be that corner, see where the four-leaf clover is?
Right.
The corner right above it.
Is it the one above it?
Yes.
Where it says.
No, it doesn't say anything.
Where it says Foxborough Plaza, but not pointing.
No. Over this way?
This way?
I'll get a point.
Thank you. Where it's green?
No.
Oh, okay, I see it.
Oh, yeah, 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 you're right.
Should, should one be there?
Well, nothing's going to happen there now.
So this one is a, like, sort of a little bit of an amalgam of some existing plazas. We can take a little bit of a closer, closer look, see, you know, see what's there, if there's, if there's like some specific overarching recommendations we can make, you know, related to, you know, how they operate and their vacancy rates and things.
There should also be a conversation, I think, with the police chief, who's recently indicated to me that there are a lot of accidents coming out of some of those plazas.
I remember that from, yeah, okay.
Good call.
And I will say, I don't really think there's any sort of unified vision or ever has been for that stretch.
Because where it located?
Not where, I don't mean that. I mean, in terms of what's happened down there. I mean, things have popped up at different times and different decades.
It's, yeah, it's, yeah, it's different from like a downtown, uptown. Okay, okay.
And it's also, I just, it finally clicked. The growth area, where it says growth area, that's where Meditech is and those industrial buildings.
Okay. And the hotel.
Pretty underused right now, I believe.
Yeah.
Yeah, there are a lot of vacancies in there.
Do we want to maybe focus on that area then, and maybe don't, you know, necessarily include the rest of the plazas in this, this growth center? You don't have to decide right now, just something, something to think about.
Right.
Yeah, this is the first time you're seeing this, so.
And I will send it out to all of you.
Thank you.
And then, you know, outside of the growth centers, which are a really good strategy and overall like guidelines for how the town is, is developed and planned, are sort of those other chapters. And one of them is services and facilities, and we know, like, the big three are usually like the sewer, stormwater, water. We're aware of what's going on with the sewer. Our firm is also doing a study for the town related to sewer service and improvements with the, through the lens of economic development along Route 1. We've shared their, the growth nodes with them. We've had a couple of meetings, and, you know, we told them what we were doing and what we're looking at, and, you know, we're sharing information back and forth, which is very, very helpful. And so sewer, water, stormwater, and then social services and emergency services. I did attend a department head meeting a few weeks back, and it sounds like the town has a lot of really great services that it provides for its residents. So I don't, I didn't know if there were any things that are sort of sticking out to you, the planning board, in terms of like community services and it's, and it's, you know, the need for significant infrastructure improvements to, you know, sort of control land use or to spur economic development outside of the sewer that we're, that we're aware of and that we'll, that we'll include in the plan.
There's been a lot of discussions about the other side of town not having a fire station. I know that always comes up. I know it's so controversial over there. I mean, is that something we should think about?
Yeah, absolutely. Within the next 20 years, that question could come up any number of times, so I think it is something that we should include.
I'm not saying I agree.
Tracy, when you say the other side of town, what do you mean? Tracy, when you say the other side of town, where specifically do you mean?
I'm thinking like Barton, Childs, Witchpon Estates.
Okay, thanks.
We can certainly make a note that the, you know, that this is an issue that the town, you know, needs to potentially think about. I know that, you know, there's like specific studies that you do to, you know, related to response times, and, you know, there's always the question of like, does it make more sense to do, do, I forget what they call it, but like.
Mutual aid agreement?
Yeah, mutual aid agreement with the other towns, right, to, you know, to provide the services. So, you know, we can flag it, and we can note that the town, you know, will have to make some additional, you know, investigation or study on this in the next, you know, 10, 15 years. So open space and natural and cultural resources. And so what we've seen so far from, from looking at the open space information that we have from the plant, the draft plan, and also just talking to people, it looks like there's a fair amount of open space in town. And even in 2015, you know, they, they indicated that about 25% of the town is protected open space, which is, I think, a goal that the town had set previously, and you've met it, and so that's, that's great. And so they're, you know, they were recommending sort of switching from acquisition and expansion of facilities to maintenance of existing facilities. I feel like, you know, just from what we've heard so far, that that might still be a true thing and something we want to move forward to this plan.
Well, I think that would be fine. I mean, we do still continue in smaller bites to add to that total, so.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, that's, you know, acquisition should be targeted, right? Like, it's, you're right, like, maybe think. So what are the, what would be new targets for acquisition for additional open space then?
Well, I think what we've seen here at the planning board is it's part of the, you know, open space subdivision proposals and applications that when developers have an opportunity to build smaller infrastructure, they're more than happy to make that contribution. And we still see that. In fact, we probably see that more often than not, wouldn't you think?
Since I've been here, certainly.
Yeah, starting to, yeah.
And so that results in, it's like smaller, and they become public?
Mm-hmm.
Publicly owned or publicly maintained?
Both.
What we're trying to do is link them together.
Yep.
With what we've already created for the green space.
Yep. That's a, that's a good point, too.
Is the greening of the gateways meaning the entrances to the town?
That's, that's what it had said. It's, you know, the, the old plan, it kind of said, you know, it's a very green town, but you wouldn't know it if you're necessarily like coming through it in certain ways.
You wouldn't.
Yeah. Yeah, so I didn't, I mean, that may not still be a priority for the town, but.
Well, one thing that I will note is that I had a chat with our conservation agent today about a parcel that could potentially be given to the town, and something that the previous, like, the contracted conservation agent had made me aware of is that sometimes there are some costs involved in maintaining properties that are donated to the town that need to be considered when, when, when you make the decision whether or not to accept those properties. So if it requires some sort of, you know, engineering of some sort to protect private properties around it, or if, you know, you, you have some kind of agreement in place where you need to maintain mowing and things like that in certain areas, that may or may not be a good idea for acquisition, just depending on the, the cost to the town of maintaining that land.
So both like capital, you know, initial capital costs maybe, and then also continued operational costs?
Maintenance, yeah.
And so that's maybe something we talk about when we, you know, we talk about your future acquisitions targeted.
It would be nice to have like a series of criteria just for the Conservation Commission to discuss when they're trying to figure out whether or not to accept properties.
That sounds like a great action item for the open space chapter. Transportation, and again, this, this multimodal network that seemed to be very important in 2015, sounds like it's going to, you know, get removed from the, from the 2025 plan. Talk, can you talk a little bit about it, just so I understand, right? Because it sounded like, you know, there may be an opportunity to do something that's not, you know, a non-vehicular connector, which sounds like a good idea, right? But, but, yeah.
They, yeah, sorry. They've, Bike Path is the, the recent one. People just want to be able to, and it's, you see it on like Facebook discussion, people be able to, and it's, you see it on like Facebook discussion, people like, where can I go for a nice walk? And everyone's always like, the Mansfield Bike Path, because it's flat and it's, you know, and it's, it's blacktop. And I just think that they're looking for one of those here. I just don't, like, know if it can be connected in the right way to make it, like, really useful.
Before we go any further on that, and I just want to make sure that I'm not off base, when, when that was done 10 years ago, was the intent, that was the thinking, that there was actually going to be a dedicated vehicular, um...
Non-vehicular.
Transport running on some sort of dedicated, um, pathway? No. Or is the thought that essentially what we're doing right now on a small scale, even with GATRA, would be, you know, that sort of...
No, because I think it's non-vehicular.
The multimodal connector.
Well, the discussion with the trolley was on the roads, on the, on the streets.
Just on the roads.
Yes.
But in the, I guess, so am I, would I infer then that now, that sort of vision is being met through means like GATRA? Because I was not involved in that.
Man, yeah, probably.
I think, I didn't see anything, like, there were a couple of different mentions. In one place it said like multimodal. So, it may not have been resolved. And, and they were, you know, maybe thinking about, like, you have these growth nodes, like, you have a potential way to connect them. That's not the roadway. I mean, it might have been just that, you know, that conceptual...
That wasn't the initial thought process. That's not the roadway, that it would be a dedicated off-road.
Something, yeah, yeah.
Well, we looked at doing a, a path adjacent to the train tracks. Well, we, yeah, we're still talking about that.
That's what we're, we're trying to figure out if that's feasible or not right now.
That's what we were looking at back then as well.
Yeah.
Yeah. But there would never be vehicles operating on it?
Not on, well, it, yeah, it would be a shared-use path for non-motorized bicycles and pedestrians.
So, that's still...
So, we're all talking the same language.
Yeah, yeah. So, we want to maybe, I mean, maybe you want to keep it on and just be clear that it's not vehicular?
I mean, non-motorized.
Yeah, non-motorized, that's right, sorry, because bikes are vehicles.
Yeah, I mean, it's, I, I think that, because I, I mean, reading the plan and not having been here at the time, I think that it was more of a, more of a, a high-level observation and desire, as opposed to anything where there'd been a lot of specific thought about it.
Well, I think also it was the thought that we wanted to bring, and that's, I think it hooks, connects to the, to the MBTA stop, is that we wanted people to be able to live here but not necessarily have to have a car, because they could commute into Boston and then come back. And then they could get around without necessarily a car, which I just don't think out here is realistic.
It's not realistic, yeah.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm. Um, the other, the other two main things from the, the traffic section in 2015 were the, maintaining the existing network, which is, you know, that's, that's pretty typical. And then traffic calming and complete streets. I saw a lot of like language in there about improving, like you were, you were just talking about, like, you know, pedestrian access in and around town.
Yeah. Um... There has been a lot of improvement around the Common.
Yeah, and so, maybe, maybe it's not like a, you know, maybe it's something that's a little more focused in certain areas, like, like the, you know, like the Common.
I mean, just that what they did at the, by the BP gas station, how it's no longer a stop, and you merge and you, you're on the thing, that has had a huge impact from a traffic standpoint, because that whole road used to back up almost to Dairy Queen when it got around dinnertime.
Right.
I do not know.
And then people were shooting down side roads that they weren't supposed to be shooting down. And that did have a very big impact. You know, maybe we need to look at, can we do that on another side of it? Because we still have people driving the wrong way around the Common.
Okay.
Oh, yeah.
And that are, that, those are all my slides from, that I wanted to test from, from the last plan to kind of see like, you know, and, and I think I have a pretty good idea. And it is pretty in line, I think, with what we've seen so far from reading the old plan and doing the research on the existing conditions we've been doing so far and the meetings I've gone to with Catherine. So, it's similar, not quite the same, with a little tweaks. So, we will, we'll, we'll work on updating those for that, for this, for this plan.
Do, do we have a sense of what the population was at the time we did the last one and where it, and if you don't know it off the top of your head, this isn't a test or anything, it's, it'd be good, it'd be interesting to understand?
Yes, we can do that. I think the, you know, the old plan and, you know, a lot of plans will have it sort of like, almost like population over time, right? So, I think that, I think your old plan might have even have it, had it since like 1970 to now. So, we will definitely, in this one, include, pull that forward.
I think we've been pretty, in the last five years, I think it's been pretty. Now, what do we, how do we, or do we, with the whole MBTA community things, you know, it's still hanging in the breeze right now. I mean, how, do we need to take into account that that may happen in the master plan?
So, you passed the ordinance at town meeting?
We did.
So, would, I'm not sure what you mean by may.
It has been ratified by the state.
I think it should be considered...
Yeah.
As we're, as we're progressing, just, you know, seeing if certain things would be viable. But I don't think that it's necessarily the vision for the town in the next 10 to 20 years.
Yeah, I just think we need to be prepared if, if we are, have to...
Have to go back for whatever reason?
If we have to go back, or this whole thing actually goes forward.
Yeah.
Because if the whole thing goes forward and something is built, I mean, just public service, you know, services to the town alone is going to have to be addressed.
Um, what's your timetable for this process and sort of the game plan for the process?
Yeah, the, there's going to be a public meeting in June, and then likely another public meeting in September. And our plan is to have the plan completed by, before the end of the year.
Good.
And so, we can talk to, I can talk to Catherine about, like, when does it make sense next to come back to you? Because, you know, we want to make sure if we're in front of you, like, we're putting things in front of you that we've developed, you know, for, for your feedback. We don't, you know, so we're using your time wisely. So, we can kind of talk about, like, maybe that happens again before the next public meeting. We, yeah, so...
And is typically in this process or with this document, is somehow is zoning integrated into that? Or is it separate?
Yeah, land use is one of the areas that we'll look at. So, there could be recommendations coming out of this plan to, to make certain zoning changes. And that would be something that obviously would come before this body for formal vote and town meeting ultimately, if it's...
Will you give the last one, Joe?
No, I wasn't.
Well, I have a couple of copies at my house. I will share one.
We have copies, too. We have about 25 copies.
Hey, I'm trying to get rid of the ones in my house. I just couldn't throw them away.
The only reason I bring that up is because, as Gabby knows, and I think I've spoken to you, you know, I have, I'd like to see some attention paid to the R15 zoning, a review of, that would include density, that would include dimensional requirements, setbacks, that sort of thing. And one of the reasons is that fits into what we have been talking about here, is that particularly in our core, you know, people can call it the Uptown node or whatever it is, but I refer to what is a bigger area. And now, we certainly are going to have, almost, almost certainly going to have some housing element on the Puntzett Avenue with Inventus or with Schneider Electric. And this is an area that always had been looked upon historically as an area for greater density, you know, whether it be a mix of commercial and residential or just residential. And that made sense, you know, historically. But now, we don't have the greatest, uh, road access to these areas. And I just think that warrants, you know, that kind of drives my thought that it warrants some attention. Is that the best place, you know, going forward? And we've seen a lot of multifamily, even some that was approved and probably might not be built in this downtown core over the past few years, partly driven by economic opportunities that have arisen. So, I don't know if that fits in with what this is.
Yeah, it definitely, it definitely does.
Yeah, Foxborough Common area is definitely one of those interesting places where it's very walkable, it is dense, there are all the services that you might potentially need, need, need. But at the same time, very little large E economic activity. So, you're probably going to have to work elsewhere. And you're right, there's no connectivity that's, that's like traditional public transportation.
Right. You, you're not going to live here if you don't have vehicles.
It's going to be very challenging to live here without a vehicle. So, it is something to take into consideration.
No, that's, this is great. This is exactly why we're in front of you, to sort of, like, those are the kind of issues that absolutely belong in the, in the, in the master plan. So, we'll, like, land use section, the housing section.
And that almost certainly is going to be one of the biggest challenges, I think, on developing a Schneider Electric property. You know, whatever vision you have, there's not great access to that land.
Yeah. And it's, it's one of those situations that car-centric development leaves you with a quandary here, because to support any kind of business activity, you need a, a density of people, whether they're workers or residents. And typically, the ones that are more reliable are residents. But at the same time, if you, if you have cars, then that's less space for people. So, it's, it's definitely a challenge that we're going to have to work through. I agree.
And it is kind of ironic that, you know, two generations ago, when you had three shifts working over there and thousands of vehicles in and out of there every day, well, the rest of the area wasn't built up like it is now, you know, so...
Yeah.
Huh.
Well, that ought to give us something to think about.
The existential questions in this part of the country.
That was a really good overview. Thank you.
No, oh, I appreciate it. Yeah, thank you very much. The other thing, the survey, so far, we have, I think, 87 responses.
Oh, really, already?
Yeah, yeah, that's really good.
So, there is a survey that's live. You can find it on the town's website. There's a website called planfoxborough.com.
Got it. It's that, that's it.
Yeah, so you can, you can take the survey right off that website. And Weston and Sampson will keep updating this page as these meetings progress and as they come up with some of their, their background, you know, data and findings.
Has that been shared on the town's social media pages? Okay.
Yeah, but we've only, we've only done a little bit. So, to hear that there are 87 responses already is great.
Okay, good.
Yeah, and we also have some folks that have signed up, like, like, we always have this, like, you can email if there's like, you can put your email in to receive updates. And generally, not a lot of people do that, but we actually have a couple, which is nice, because then, you know, what, because we have just a, sort of a placeholder right now for that meeting in June, because, um, I didn't like refine the time, so I, you know, I need to, you know, figure that out. So, we put a thing like, we'll let you know when, you know, when the final times are set, and then we can email them. And there are actually people to get the emails, and that's really great. So, it just, you know, you guys are getting, even, you know, before we're having meetings, some really great response.
And can I just, there's one thing I forgot, that, get the book out.
Get the...
Her red pen, I like the red.
But, you know, in effect, with, it just came to my mind, with the adoption of the accessory apartment zoning, it effectively renders the whole town a multifamily zone. Now, obviously, that would not be at densities that we would expect in our R15 district, you know, but still, it is true.
Yeah. We've actually been thinking about this a little bit, and, and also, like, the, the folks that are doing the sewer work are doing a similar or somewhat similar project in different community. And they were kind of asking the same thing, like, when you're planning for sewer, now that you have this ADU, do you plan for like twice as much? But, and you could.
I mean, that might be overbuilding, but...
Yeah, but what we've seen so far, I mean, you know, there's not like, I don't have like a, like a specific source of data. But again, you know, we pay attention to this. What we've seen so far is that it's really expensive to build an accessory unit. So, and money is expensive right now, construction's expensive right now. You know, in places where they, they've, they've done it, you're not seeing like, like a rush of, of these, these types of apartments because of the cost of building them. So, it's just...
But that zoning is forever. I mean, not forever, but it kind of is.
I mean, it's not like, you know, it's not like all of a sudden, there's like, you know, and, and who knows, maybe eventually in 50 years, maybe you will. But like, it's not something that's happening quickly, you know, because of the cost.
So, just for your reference, we've, the first day that the regulations took effect, we, Scott got, I think he said, like, 10, 10 calls or something like that. Only one of those is moving forward because of cost considerations, because of misunderstandings of the regulations and what's allowed. And a lot of people were basically trying to use it to build a whole second house as, as opposed to...
Yeah.
A, a smaller accessory unit. And they got pretty disappointed when they found out the, the size restrictions. So, we, we're seeing interest, but we're, we're seeing a lot of just casual interest that evaporates as soon as people really understand.
Yeah, the floodgates are not open, right? It's trickle so far. But you're right, it is something to consider, right, in terms of your, you know, your build-out and your, and your infrastructure needs.
Thank you.
And it's not even 8 o'clock yet.
I, oh.
That's good, that's good, yeah.
No, you don't.
Thank you so, thank you so much for your time.
Thank you very much. That was a great presentation.
Glad you came in. Thank you.
Please, yeah, let me know. Catherine has my information if you think of anything else or you want to add something or, you know, anything.
Thank you.
Make motion to adjourn?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Tracy, aye.
Oh, Jeff, aye.
Ron, aye. Gentlemen?
Gary, aye.
Gary, aye. Kevin, aye. Okay. Motion is unanimous. Party's over, let's go home.